Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Tonight's meeting will be streamlined, streamed live on the district's YouTube channel. A direct link of recorded video will be posted on the district's website, and we would like to call this meeting to order. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. If we could have roll call, please.
Ms. Hines. Ms. Peters. Ms. Wagner. Mr. Wardick. Mr. Jacobs. Ms. Gleason Miller. Ms. Reinhardt.
Here. And moving right along to our extraordinary educational experiences, Dr. Avila, you're up. Okay, sure. It's my turn. Well, Dan was going to, but he's...
Doesn't matter. Awesome. Well, I love to see a packed house because we have so many incredible people to celebrate tonight, starting with our amazing students. We have eight members of our North Kansas City Schools Class of 2026 who have been named National Merit semifinalists. If you would please come forward as I call your name. Nicholas Baloo from Staley, Samuel Henenfent from Staley, Colby Horton from Staley, John Hurt from Oak Park, Caleb Johnston from Oak Park, Grady Lipe from North Town, Lawson Stulzots from Staley, and Drake Wazleski from Staley. Could we give a round of applause for this group? Each of these seniors...
Wow.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead. Each of these seniors earned this title through their outstanding performance on a nationally-normed academic exam. These talented students represent the top half of a percent of all high school seniors in the country. This fall, they will continue on in this prestigious National Merit Scholarship competition, potentially earning tens of thousands of dollars in scholarships to pursue their post-secondary goals. Congratulations once again.
So everybody's a senior? Okay. So when you introduce your... These are the smarty pants of the group, okay? So when you introduce yourself, if you might say what your future plans are, because we're always curious about that, and introduce us to any friends and family that you brought with us, you, this evening, we'd love to hear that, too. You're up.
Hi, I'm Grady Lipe. I'm applying to Belmont University for a degree in Cinematic Composition. I've got my father and grandfather over there, and I'm passing this off to Caleb.
I'm Caleb Johnson, and next year I'm gonna major in Mechanical Engineering somewhere, not decided yet, and I'm here with my parents, Jennifer and Ryan Johnson. Here's Kyle.
I'm Kyle. I'm planning on majoring in Secondary Education with a minor in English, and I'm here with my parents and my sister, and I'm passing this off to Nick.
I'm Nick Baloo from Staley. I'm planning on majoring in Engineering, and my two parents are back there, my mom and dad, and my football coach, Coach Hudgens. And I'm passing it to Sam.
Hi, my name's Sam. I have my mom and dad, Kristen and Joel back there, my grandparents, Beth and Greg. After high school, I'm committed to swim at Duke University, so I'll be doing that and majoring in biomedical engineering. Passing this to Colby.
I'm Colby. I go to Staley, and I wanna major in Business, and I came with my mom and my dad. Lawson.
I'm Lawson. I go to Staley. I'm here with my two parents, and after high school, I don't know what college I wanna go to, but I know I wanna major in Biology, and I'm handing it to Drake.
Hello, my name is Drake. I'm planning to go to KU for Economics. I'm here with my mother and sister, and also, I didn't bring this one, but I do have a dear friend here, Dr. Emily Howell, and I don't know who I'm passing this off to.
Well, aren't you guys lovely, too? It is so nice to celebrate you, and we're so very proud to have this number of individuals moving forward with the National Merit Competition. So thank you for that, and we can't wait to see what the future holds for you. I loved hearing a little bit about where you think you will end up and what your future holds, but we will be following you all of the way, and we're so very proud that you're North Kansas City Schools graduates to be pretty soon. So thank you again for bringing your families out, and we love to celebrate you. We have a tradition here where we'll go around and we'll shake the hands of all of the people here at the table and offer you congratulations in that way. So great work. We'll see you, see where you end up next year. Thank you.
Next, we have a National FCC LA Medalist here with us tonight. If Logan Thon would please come forward at this time. Over the summer, Staley Senior Logan Thon found the recipe for success. After qualifying to compete in the FCC LA Nationals, he took home a silver medal, placing 23rd in his event against competitors from all across the country. Congratulations, Logan.
So what are you serving us this evening? Nothing? That's not a good answer. Okay, so what was the recipe, the creme de la creme?
It was chicken piccata with green beans and... I don't remember.
Chicken. Okay. All right. Well, we'd like, love to congratulate you on that, and if you will point out, like, who you might have brought with you this evening?
My parents, my grandparents, my football coach, and my principal.
When did you first start to enjoy cooking?
When I was younger, when I was, I would always help out my parents cooking, like middle-school-ish.
Nice. Glad you helped. Good. Do you do dishes?
Yes.
Good. Good answer, too. Nice. So what is your favorite thing to cook and eat for yourself?
Probably just chicken because of all the variety. You can really do anything with it.
Yeah, I agree. When we first read your little bio here, I said, "Prove it," so I'm still waiting, okay? We can't wait, but we, again, are excited about what the future holds for you, and do you have future plans at this point?
Right now, I plan to join the United States Military.
Respect for that. Well, you will make us proud in a large variety of ways, so thank you for being here tonight, and congratulations. We'd love for you to shake hands, too.
Next up, we have three of our very own coaches who have been named the Chiefs Coach of the Week. If we could have, from North Town, Dan Joyner, come forward; from Winnetonka, Michael Cobbins; and from Staley, Drew Hudgens.
Pissing one.
For three consecutive weeks, Chiefs Coach of the Week honors have been awarded to leaders right here in our district. Congratulations to our high school football coaches, Dan Joyner, Michael Cobbins, and Drew Hudgens. This recognition celebrates high school coaches not only for their team's performance, but also for the ways they make a difference in the lives of their student athletes beyond football. We are proud to recognize this trio of champions tonight. Congratulations.
Wow. When they decide to do all this for the debate coaches, then I'll really be on board with it, but... I'm sorry, guys. You know, I went to LSU, I watched a lot of football. I went to OU, I watched a lot of football, so, and when you guys are in all your playoffs, I'll be there watching a lot of football. So, congratulations. I know this is a big football town, so say who might be here with you this evening. I guess the other coach is still working with his team. So, anyway, congratulations.
I am representing myself, North Kansas City High School. I think my principal, Dr. Jones, is back there. That's who's accompanying me today.
I'm here with my wife, Kiana Cobbins, and my principal, Dr. Tate.
I'm here with my principal, Dr. Smith, and then Logan and Nick, who you all met a minute ago.
Yeah, good work. They're smart, too. That is nice. I was thinking today about how historic this is, first of all. We have not had coach after coach deemed with this honor, and we're just so very proud of you. You guys have had incredible seasons already, but what's more important than that is what you're doing to change kids' lives. And I know that firsthand about each of you, as I've gotten to know you or hear about you as well, I know what impact you're having, and I can think of how many older men, too, who still talk about their football coaches and what they meant in their lives, and it just is so compelling how you're really teaching them to be strong men overall off the football field, and I see that in the work that you do and the way you speak to them, and the way that you coach them and build them up. So thank you for that. That's such a testament to the time that you've committed to the sport, and I know it's a lot of time. I know spouses sure know that, too, and what you give, and we are so very grateful. So your record is a tremendous thing, but what you're doing for kids each and every day means so much more, too. So thank you for that. We'd love to shake your hands, too. Thank you.
Thank you again for the opportunity. Our community partner we are recognizing tonight is Google. If we could have Justin Hobbs, the Kansas City Data Center Site Operations Manager, come forward at this time. This evening, we are grateful to recognize Google for their partnership with North Kansas City Schools and our education foundation in providing extraordinary educational experiences for our students. Through this collaboration, a $100,000 grant is expanding workforce readiness and hands-on learning for students in our high school alternative program. Together with the foundation and the KC Current, Google also helps send eighth-grade girls across our district to the In Her Boots STEM Career Event at the CPKC Stadium, followed by a KC Current match. Most recently, on September 16th, Google and the foundation hosted an all-day robotics workshop at our Future Ready Lab with the REC Foundation, where 107th graders from across North Kansas City Schools designed, built, and competed in friendly challenges. Google has also partnered with the foundation to connect students to creative careers, bringing a Google Art Director to our Stage Center and H-SAP to lead a Google Doodles workshop with student creations proudly displayed at the foundation's Fall Breakfast. We are so pleased to welcome Justin here from Google this evening to represent and to accept our thanks. Thank you so much for all that you do.
Wow, you know, in the dark ages, it used to be you had to look something up in a dictionary, and now you're just here, "Google it," okay? Right? So a lot of changes that have been made, and your generosity is absolutely overwhelming. It has impacted so, so many lives. So thank you so very much.
You all, I... You all have come up with the coolest experiences for our kids, and again, your generosity and creativity is just so compelling. I've loved seeing and being a part of some of the events that Dr. Avila just read about. Can't wait to see what else is coming because it's just incredible what you've given us as opportunities. So we're very grateful for that partnership, very, very thankful for it. If I didn't work here, I'd wanna work there, but I like it here. I do. But again, thank you for that partnership, and we would love for you to say a few words if you'd like to.
We're really happy to be here. I've been with Google now for 16 years, and I've seen what Google coming to my hometown did, and I look forward to seeing what it can do here. The robotics event was amazing, seeing the kids participate in that, and I did get to go to the boot, In Her Boots, also. That stadium, if you haven't been there, is very impressive. Thank you for everything and welcoming us to the community, and we look forward to many more events.
We'd love to shake your hands, too.
For our champions of service tonight, we are recognizing two important employee groups, starting with those from our Technology Department in celebration of IT Professionals Day, which was just earlier this month. If we could please have Matt Pepperdine from Tech, as well as Tyler Dent, come forward at this time? Here's what their supervisors and colleagues had to say about them. Matt, Matt is the kind of champion every school relies on, known for resolving issues quickly and accurately. He keeps classrooms and offices running smoothly by making sure technology works seamlessly for staff and students. Colleagues describe him as approachable, respectful, and always willing to help. His proactive problem-solving, dependable, follow-through, and commitment to excellent service make him an exceptional partner across the district. Matt's dedication not only supports learning, but also strengthens his entire team's success. Thank you, Matt. Tyler. Tyler's commitment shows in both the big projects and the everyday details. When it came time for student device deployment, he devoted nearly two full weeks, often staying late, to make sure every student had what they needed for a successful start. Tyler anticipates challenges and delivers solutions that keep our buildings running without a hitch. Always approachable and respectful, he builds trust with staff and students alike, thanks to his focus on teamwork and service. Thank you, Tyler, also, for all that you do.
You all are like the person behind the screen or the curtain in The Wizard of Oz. As far as I'm concerned, you're just doing a lot of magic back there, and you make things happen, so you're brilliant, and I do appreciate that you answer my phone calls, and when I drag in my laptop, you go, "Oh, this is the same password." So, all of that is very helpful, and I am very appreciative, and I know my other board members are, too. Do you have anybody special you wanna send a shout-out to? I appreciate it.
My wife Sandra over there. I think I see my bosses Keith and Rick over here, and my parents are watching on YouTube.
I just wanna say thank you. My bosses are here to support me. Other than that, that's it.
I can give firsthand witness to how many times Matt's gotten me out of trouble, so thank you for that. And he always does it with this nice smile. He doesn't, he doesn't criticize the number of tabs I have open, the things on my desktop, or the many emails that I don't delete. So thank you. Thank you personally, from me to you. And then Tyler, just hearing about what I know you to do, and then Matt again, too, you just, you show up at any hour, any day. You make things happen, and you understand that the point of service are students, and then the teachers who are doing their best by them are most important. You guys, you remove barriers and you just make things happen so that they can seamlessly learn and be taken care of in an organization. So thank you for that. I feel it as a colleague of yours. I know they do, too. So we appreciate you greatly, and we'd love for you to shake hands as well. Thank you.
Next up, we have another employee group that is so vital to getting the school year started off well, and that would be our cafe and recess clerks. If we could have Ashley Jarman from Chapel Hill, Amber Clements from West Inglewood, and Caitlin Johnston from Choteau, if you'd come forward at this time. First, I'm gonna tell you a bit about Ashley. Ashley's energy and dedication shine through in everything she does at Chapel Hill, from serving on the Conscious Discipline Action Team and PTA to creating engaging and meaningful displays, she does it all. Each day, Ashley makes positive phone calls home, celebrating students' successes and strengthening connections with families. Parents love stopping by the cafe, and students light up around her. With her constant encouragement and positive attitude, Ashley has become a true champion for the Chapel Hill School community. Thank you, Ashley, for all that you do. Amber. Amber's impact at West Inglewood extends far beyond her official role as a clerk. She is also a health and wellness champion, conscious discipline expert, and trusted problem solver, like, living out what it means to be a relentless champion for both students and each other. Amber is a steady and calming presence, and her colleagues share that she never hesitates to jump in whenever someone needs care, encouragement, or just a helping hand. Everyone knows Amber at the nest, and everyone is better for it. And then last but certainly not least, Caitlin. Caitlin's leadership and care make a difference every day. She consistently steps up to problem solve, whether it's creating alternate schedules on the fly or supporting students who need extra help during lunch and recess. Colleagues admire the way she anticipates challenges, bringing forward thoughtful solutions before they become problems. Most importantly, Caitlin is intentional about building strong relationships with both students and staff. Her consistent efforts and steady presence make her an invaluable leader at Choteau. Thank you all for what you do each day.
When I think of clerks, I think of Bob Cratchit's job in A Christmas Carol, but it sounds like you all are doing way more than Bob was cranking out in that coal place with no heat, so, wow. I mean, that's very impressive, all the things that you do, the creativity, the being with kiddos, putting up with them at lunch and recess. You know, that's a lot. So, thank you, and if you would recognize any friends or family that you've got here this evening, we'd love to hear it.
So I have my wonderful children right here. I have my boss also, the building principal, and I have my mentor and right-hand woman who is with me as well, my coworker, and I have my parents and my husband in different states watching on YouTube.
I have my husband, my children here, and then I have Jessica, and Dr. Powell, and Ms. Bailey, and I'm gonna take credit for Kiana as well, and...
I have my amazing husband, Chris, my best friend, Lauren, my amazing Choteau family, and my parents are watching on YouTube from Texas.
I love it. Man.
What I loved about hearing each of those, those pieces that Dr. Avila read was, "You, none of you are just doing the job, the job description you were assigned. You are an integral part of each of your buildings, and you are such an important part of the community and the service that we provide to kids and families." So thank you for that. Going above and beyond, hearing about the things that you have taken on above and beyond that job, and the training and the expertise, and just jumping in wherever's needed, and we would want that of every employee, to have that, that feeling that you connect so deeply to the mission that we can't do this without you. And that's what I was thinking when we read those pieces. So thank you for that. Thank you for all that you give to us each and every day. What a pleasure to honor you in front of all of these people and the millions watching online. So, so thank you. Congratulations. I'm glad we got to honor you tonight. Please shake the hands of the individuals here.
Thank you. Well, that concludes this portion of our meeting for tonight. If you are welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, we're gonna talk about the budget, but if you'd rather excuse yourself, this is a perfect time to do so. Thank you for coming out. It's riveting.
Okay, thank you all for participating in that. Next, we have visitors' comments. Well, you said they were quiet, but they're not. Okay. At each regular business meeting and opportunity... At each regular business meeting, an opportunity is provided for visitors to address the board members regarding any subject concerning education. Patrons are asked to contact the board secretary with their request to speak prior to the meeting. Yellow cards are also available and located just inside the door button entering the boardroom. Each individual is allowed three minutes with a total of 30 minutes allotted. While your comments will be heard, board members will not respond at this time. We do, however, follow up in a timely manner regarding questions or concerns. Because this is an open meeting, speakers are to refrain from discussing personnel complaints involving individual staff members or students. And to my knowledge, we do not have any yellow cards or visitors speaking this evening. Okay. Moving right along to item two is the approval of the agenda. Are there any questions or concerns or discussions about tonight's agenda?
To approve.
Okay. Is there a second? Yes. Okay. Is there any discussion about the agenda? Okay. Then, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
No? Abstention? Okay. So, the agenda has passed, which leads us to the consent agenda. There was a slight correction. There are about 26 items for approval on tonight's consent agenda. I think one was dropped off. Are there any questions or discussions on the consent agenda? Do I hear a motion to approve the consent? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. And, all right.
That would be Ms. Hines', second. Thank you.
Okay. Sorry. Okay. So, at this point, we move to the treasurer's report.
Thank you, Madam President. August fiscal year-to-date operating receipts totaled $27.1 million. That's a 7% increase over the same period last year. August 2025 operating expenditures totaled $15.6 million, a 17.7% increase over the same period last year. Just so you know, the difference is due mainly to the timing of payments made to renew several technology licenses made in August in the current year and made in July the previous year. Year-to-date operating expenditures and encumbrances are in line with the prior year. State general revenue collections for August 2025 increased 9.5%, caused primarily by individual income tax as well as sales and use tax collection. The finance department staff is now working with our independent auditors, RSM, on the audit for the '24-'25 fiscal year. The audit field work is in process and the final report will be presented to this Board of Education and to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education prior to the statutory due date of December 31, 2025. That's the report.
All right. So, at this point, all those in, is there any question or further discussion on the consent agenda at this point? Okay. So, a call for the vote on this as presented. All those in favor, please say yes. Yes?
Yes.
Any no's? Abstention? Okay. Moving on to item four is a consent agenda item for separate consideration. We have one item for separate consideration. Are there any questions regarding this? Okay. Do I hear a motion on the one separated item?
To approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor would say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
No? No? Abstentions? Okay. And that has been approved. Okay. So, item number five is a public hearing of proposed tax rate. And at this point, we will pause the business meeting for the public hearing portion of it, and that goes to Matt.
All right. Thank you, Madam President. Each year before October 1st, the Board of Education is required to set the tax rates by fund for the upcoming year. The district files this information with the Clay and Platt Counties, who use this information to produce our resident tax bills. Taxpayers have until December 31st to pay the county collector's office for the '25 tax bill. The forms, excuse me, the forms to set the tax rate are produced by the Missouri State Auditor's Office for all taxing jurisdictions. We utilize those forms to calculate this current tax rate. The prior year tax rate ceiling for operating funds was $4.3081. We were required to do a rollback of $0.2438 cents for the operating funds, leading us to an operating levy of $4.0643. And our district levy required for debt service is now $1.43 for a total tax rate of $5.4943, which is a reduction of $0.1214 from the prior year overall. With that, I'd be happy to take any questions from the public. No questions? Now, I'll turn it back over to you, Madam President.
Okay. So, we will reopen the business meeting at this point. Okay. So, Matt will present the tax rate package for the board approval. Answer any questions. Do I hear a motion to accept Matt's report?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Any further discussion? Okay. That has been passed. We'll now go to summary of, back to you again, summary of the proposed final budget and answer any questions from board members regarding that, please.
Yes. Tonight, we're updating the budget documents to reflect the new information from the time when we passed the original budget in June, which is mandated by the state. This is just an updated September budget that includes things like our new tax rate and new estimates for some different areas. So, I'll just go quickly over the differences between June and this new one in September. So, if I can go to the next slide. The September budget assessed valuation, I'll just let everyone know, has increased by $303.7 million over what we estimated in June. The tax rate decreased by $0.0746 more than we estimated in June. The tax revenue has increased by $13.5 million more than we estimated in June. And the other things that we've changed from June, the state foundation formula, we used a 68-60 SAT, and we are now utilizing the full 7145, which is fully funding of the state revenue. And that estimate has increased by $3.7 million from June. As far as expenditures are concerned, the only major changes are we've increased the salaries and benefits area by $4.4 million over the June estimate to account for contingency language that we approved back in April. And also, we've adjusted our purchase services lines for over, around $450,000 over the June estimate, just for costs that we'll get into here in a minute with our insurance. But it was up a little higher than what we had originally estimated in June. On the next page, you'll see we ended, that one's hard to see, but ultimately, I'll read it for you. The first step to our fund balance is figuring out what that June 30 of '25 fund balance is going to be. Back in June, we estimated that to end up around 20.87%, and now here in September, we know it, and it's going to be right at 23.25%. And that's pending any adjustments that we may make due to audit adjustments. But that's where we'll end up this current year. And then, on the next slide, we'll go into where we think we're going to end next year. In June, we thought we would be around 17.1% as a fund balance, and now here in September, we're predicting 18.4% fund balance. And so, those are the major changes from June. But I'd be happy to answer any questions that anyone has.
Well, I just have a comment. As treasurer, I appreciate Matt meeting with me a couple times when he has such a busy schedule. And I really begged him, I did, I begged him in his office to go through this whole packet, page by page, and he just said he wasn't going to do it. No, I'm kidding. We talked and I said, "Why don't you just do a summary for this board? They understand the budget." So, I appreciate you listening and doing this.
Yep.
And so, Madam President, I move to approve.
Okay. Is there a second? One of you. Okay. So, the motion has been made and seconded. This calls for a vote. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes. All those opposed, no? Abstentions? Okay. Any other questions or follow-up on this?
No. I just, I do, I want to thank Matt and his whole team, because I know it takes a lot of individuals to get us to this place, and so, thank you for all you do.
Yes. And thank you for not going through it page by page this evening. We appreciate that.
I still can, if you'd like.
It's okay. You're up again for the next item, which is property liability workers' compensation insurance renewals. And Matt will review the insurance renewals and answer any questions from board members.
Yes. The district's property and liability and workers' compensation insurance policies expire on September 30 today. We don't usually have the meeting on September 30, so we're going to be getting out all of our insurance cards tonight, should you approve these changes. But we've been working with our insurance broker, Lockton. If you remember, back this past year, we've done an RFP or an RFQ and then an RFP for our insurance. Lockton has won that work again. So, we worked with them to create some new, or to get some new bids from some different insurance companies. Lockton worked with all of the components of the plan to secure renewals. Direct expenditures for premiums on these policies will increase $691,000, up from $4.4 million to $5.1 million in the coming year. The year-over-year increase cost is due mainly to 4.77% increase in exposures, meaning we have more stuff and more things to cover. And then, the remainder of the increase is due to increased rates on the different lines. If you scroll down all the way, are we on this? Yep. All the way to the bottom, you can see in very, that's the tax rate, one that you have on the screen. We're onto insurance, which is in a different section. It's not that section. You have to go back out. Sorry. So, on the insurance, there's a premium in exposures renewal, and there you can see line by line, our property insurance has increased overall by 2% from the prior year. Our general liability has increased 3%. Our automobile has increased 4%. Our workers' compensation has increased 23%, and that's the one that is our largest line of service in this category. And really, the main driver, or there's two main drivers on that. That's how many people and how much we spend on salaries has gone up significantly there. And then, also, we've had a lot more incidents over the past year. So, those are the two items that are driving that significant change. Our umbrella insurance has gone up 7%. Our education legal liability has gone up 19%, and we stayed flat with student accident insurance and law enforcement. Our crime coverage has gone up a modest 2%, and our cyber coverage has gone down by 1%. So, overall, we're looking at an 11% increase from the prior year. And these estimates are included in the budget that we just approved. But I'd be happy to take any questions if anyone has.
Any questions from board members on this?
Well, I had one, and I meant to ask this one. And I meant to ask this when we met last Thursday. When you talk about workman's comp and when I was in the private sector where I worked, we used to work with, and I know we used to do it years ago, but we worked with our employees to make them aware of how they can work safer and have fewer accidents and those types of things through professional development or through their bosses or how, do we still do some of that to be cognizant of workman's comp and how we can help that rate?
Yes. No. And I'm remiss. I didn't mention Todd Trent with Lockton is here with us tonight as well, in case we had any major questions. But this is something that we work with Lockton on. Mandy McKay, myself, and some others have been, and part of the Lockton team have worked on a plan to create more safety programs and things like that. It's one of those things where you're really good at, we've been really good at it for several years, and then we just had an uptick. And so, we're going to put some more full-force effort into our safety programs and things, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or concerns? Okay. So, we've had a motion to approve this.
To approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
No? Abstentions? Any further questions or discussions? Okay. Moving on. Dr. Daniels, you're up.
Yes. Let's talk goals. Let's do it. Tonight, I wanted to remind all of those Remember the Thousands watching on YouTube that we begin with our strategic plan.
Wait, don't forget ships at sea. I forgot to mention them earlier. Ships at sea.
We begin with our strategic plan. So, again, the feedback from a large variety of community, students, parents, patrons, our teachers, our staff members. And then, each year, the board prioritizes goals for the balance scorecard. Then, those goals become superintendent goals, but this year, we had additional conversations about how could we make these more ongoing in conversation around continual development, which is the goal. So, you'll hear a couple of additional pieces, but they're certainly aligned back to the balance scorecard. So, you see it right there. We're going to start with the student quadrant. We have three goals in the student quadrant, two that were carried over from last year's balance scorecard, and then one new one. And I will draw your attention to the documents in the blue folder. Much like Matt with the budget, I will not read all of that information to you. I will just scan the highlights so that you get a feel for each goal and where we're headed. Goal number one in the student quadrant, conduct a comprehensive review of student performance in existing programs to ensure thoughtful allocation of resources that ultimately benefit all. And Dr. Sutton and Dr. Porter will be our point persons for this one. Specifically, this goal carried over so that we could do our first AVID and our first high school alternative program, district-wide program evaluations. And historically, AVID has had program evaluations, as you've heard, by school, but we haven't done it as a school district quite yet. And then, the high school alternative program has not yet been evaluated. And with its move and some of the goals to follow where we're continuing to expand services, it's going to be a really useful tool for us. Some of the things that we will review will be participation rates, student and parent sentiment for both programs, academic outcomes, current resource allocation. And then, the ultimate goal will be to implement those program modifications and then make resource adjustments based on that evaluation. If you remember, Dr. Sutton had introduced this model to us last year. It was very comprehensive in nature. I look forward to what we can glean from those two programs. The next goal, the next goal in the student quadrant, redesign and expand educational opportunities for students needing a setting outside of the traditional classroom to provide routes to individual success. Straight from the strategic plan, Dr. Porter is our point person. We have made such great gains here over many years, but with our move to the Northland Innovation Center and then our ability to bring more of our alternative education programming under one roof, we wanted to maintain this goal. So, a couple of pieces that I wanted to draw your attention to. We've expanded our ability to serve kids in a variety of settings, and we're very grateful for that. It has served students well and families well. Over time, you've heard reports and updates regarding the high school alternative program, Missouri Options Program, our temporary alternative placement center, and the high school academies. Our focus this year will be all about increasing participation in partial day and blended schedule alternative program, and then the Missouri Options Program. program, and then the Missouri Options Program as well, so that we reduce our reliance on full-day programming as our sole alternative educational option here in North Kansas City schools. So, right now, we feel like we're overemphasizing H-SAP to some degree, and that we have other, other means that we could further develop out. You'll see in that long-term goal, that expansion also includes, in our comprehensive high schools, the academies, better serving ninth and 10th grade students rather than just juniors and seniors in those. So again, addressing the needs of younger students. I'm very proud of the efforts of Dr. Johnson, who led these, these charges years ago, Dr. Porter, Shelley Sanders, and many other, others who have really brought meaning. When we say we serve as relentless champions for all students, this is a great goal that brings meaning to that, points right back to all means all. So, thank you. The last goal in the student quadrant is brand-new, but from the strategic plan, embed research-based instructional approaches that enhance student agency and build upon current district instructional models. Basically, on this goal, we will use the proficiency scales that you heard about during our combined teams meeting earlier, and we will have our clearly articulated learning targets. We'll use both of those to remove guesswork for students in furthering our approach with standards-based learning. The Panorama Survey will serve as a gauge for us. We'll gauge agreement with statements related to persistence, resilience, the belief that effort leads to success, and student confidence in their ability to complete challenging academic tasks. And that'll be the primary tool we use to hear directly from students, but teacher sentiment will also be measured to better understand student efficacy. Do they really believe in themselves as related to the implementation of standards-based learning? And again, Dr. Sutton will lead that charge. That is your student quadrant. Let's hop over to the staff quadrant. We have three goals that remain here with one new one. The first, increasing the capacity of classified and certified staff through professional development to respond to social, emotional needs, learning needs. Again, straight from the strategic plan, Dr. Porter and Dr. Johnson share this goal. This is another one where we've made great progress around delineating between special education needs and behavioral needs, and then connecting students, teachers, and families with the proper resources. You'll see some data there that shows how we've progressed over time, but our ultimate goal is to reduce special education referrals by 2%, and then increase our responsive behavioral services by 5%. It will also eventually develop into a comprehensive and ongoing plan for professional development for both classified, again, thanks to the means that we have now for classified professional development, and then certified in the area of social, emotional support, and behavior response to students. Again, the work has begun. We just need more time to ensure it's systemic and operationalized, again, on both the classified and certified sides. When I do building visits, this is a piece that I hear feedback on around the gains that we've made, again, in delineating special education needs and response to behavioral needs and response. The second goal there in the staff quadrant, create holistic programs for personal growth and wellness that ensure all staff members feel seen, heard, and valued. Straight from the strategic plan, Dr. Johnson is our point person. And the primary work of this goal will be managed by Dr. Jessica Martin and our Director of Wellness, and Randy Couch, who is our benefits coordinator. So beyond an audit of what current mental and emotional health supports, benefits packages, the family health plan, we will also have focus groups to convene and help further define needs. I would also add that our building visits give us some insight into that. And Amanda Bearden and Dr. Avila have been traveling to each and every one of those, gaining input. And then ultimately, I see CTTN as then advancing those needs. And I know, again, Amanda has partnered with Dr. Martin in regards to that, to just articulate what our staff members need to show up whole and well in order to best serve our students and our families. So implementation of this goal will result in some evidence-based adjustments for the coming year. The next goal in the staff quadrant is to recruit and retain highly-qualified staff to help fulfill our mission. Dr. Johnson is in charge of this one. We will reconvene the recruitment and retention task force. And then you'll see some pieces related to both of those items that will come out of it. We'll continue to strengthen our relationships with universities so that we can attract highly-qualified and diverse student teachers and teacher candidates that can be more representative of our student population. We are utilizing already, so remember, it's still September on the calendar, we're already utilizing pool hiring to fill anticipated positions for both certified and classified positions. And I can tell you, historically, that was something that didn't happen until the start of the new year, so January timeframe. We're ahead of the game and really getting some good people in place to serve in all capacities. On the retention side, you'll see we're in the process of revising the district employee orientation process. So this will be a nice onboarding and welcoming piece that we can add and just really build upon what we already have. And then creating structured compensation plans that are market-comparable across all work groups. I know, we've had discussions in executive sessions about some of those changes to be made in ranges of salaries. We're taking a much closer look so that we do have market comparisons and can compete with other school districts and other companies for the best people. I loved calling out how our engagement strategies will also centralize voice, choice, autonomy, mastery, and purpose. And that's definitely something that you see in any of the work of our HR department, is valuing and lifting up the employees' voice in that. And then our capacity of employee resource groups to expand that. We've got eight, I believe, functioning right now, and we hope to further empower those, those teams of people coming together that can unite around a common cause and help us create, create our mission and see that through to fruition. The next goal in the staff quadrant is new. It's a big one. It is a collaboration between Dr. Johnson and Matt Fritz, and you'll see it make a comeback on the finance quadrant, okay? So on the staff quadrant, it is develop a comprehensive staffing model that is flexible, equitable, efficient, and addresses the diverse needs of schools and departments. And you'll see below, a lot of baseline data that specifically calls out special education and ELL student growth over time. And we know that those areas have popped, certainly, within the last several years, and our ratios for teachers to students haven't always kept up. Additionally, you'll see some ratios there for counselors and social workers per student, too. So there's an awful lot of data in this goal. But what the, the work involved in it entails is, by January, we would have a comprehensive staffing model that uses both enrollment-based, so triggered by numbers, and equity-based, triggered by needs, indicators, so that we can better staff school buildings and district programs. Then by May, you will see a fiscal model that allows the district to responsibly implement and sustain that proposed comprehensive staffing model. So it's really going to be reinventing the way that we've allocated resources to better account for diverse needs throughout a very diverse school district. And I'm thankful for the work that started on this, but I know it's a large load. It's a big task ahead of us. And it will be one that we do use a staggered approach to fully implement. And you can see the years that we would start with there. But this year is really defining the model and the fiscal resources to support it, and then beginning to pilot the model in the coming year. Let's see. Couple of the factors, I did want to just call this out, in, in the equity-based staffing indicators, because I think we're all pretty familiar with enrollment-based ones. Some of the things that we'll be looking at would be the number of ELL students, the numbers of students who have 504 plans, the numbers of students on individualized education plans, our free and reduced lunch rates and/or percentages, what our discipline data looks like in schools, our academic achievement there, what responsive services we have that can be tracked by our counseling departments, what referrals we are seeing made to outside agencies, the number of families identified as speaking languages other than English in the home, and really looking to speak to need-based staffing in a much better way than what we've been able to do. So, excited to give you more progress on that goal. That's the staff quadrant, everybody. All right. Thank you. Thank you for that. The community quadrant, we have two goals that we've had before, but they're back for a comeback. The first one is Tammy's favorite, continue legislative and community advocacy and support of our students. And even though we could all agree that this is operationalized, it's an ongoing fight. And we want to make sure that it's present on that balance scorecard each and every year. We have developed, we've worked with the board committee, Tammy has, to start developing the district legislative agenda. And then she, on my behalf, attended a meeting with the Cooperative School Districts of Greater Kansas City. I've told you in years past, they kind of copy our work. They look to us for that, and I appreciated the streamlined approach that they're taking this year, so that their message is much more just in your face. Here's what we're about, here's what we're not. And that's how our legislative agenda appears to. Tammy is our primary advocate for this goal, but certainly, all of us will be called into service to provide great examples of what's going on in our public schools, so that we can tell our stories and get our messages out for the Missouri General, General Assembly. And then, building grassroots coalitions to further support public education, those efforts will take place at the local, state, and federal level. This is also a component that our HP2 group gets involved in. We, we show them what advocacy looks like at both the state and national level, and they will be helping us with these efforts, too. Then the second goal in the community quadrant is embrace and support the neighborhoods within North Kansas City schools. Again, we've had it around. Tammy referenced as the baseline data, our successful bond passage with 81% of the vote. We're thankful for that, but always more to do to better engage our communities and our neighborhoods. The short-term goal on this is to establish connections with our neighborhoods through increased communications and partnerships to ensure residents have agency in the success of our school district and our students. And I liked where we went with this one. It's a new tactic, creating an electronic hub for neighborhoods, civic, and community organizations to tap into our student volunteers. We have long since tried to create opportunities for students to do, to do public service, or even earn community service hours altogether. But this will be a more streamlined approach for requests, and then we can be of service to them. But again, allowing students to have those opportunities in new ways. And then, the two-year implementation of the Board Connections Program. I know some of you are big fans, but it's a nice way to get involved in the school communities and then see a larger variety, so that you're, you are seeing all of the communities throughout our, our school district, again, very varied in their approaches at each site. That's the community quadrant. We're on to finance, everybody. We've had a lot of, a lot of finance tonight, but here we go. We have two repeats with one new goal there. The first one, effectively monitoring bond 2025 expenditures in support of the district's implementation of our 10-year facilities plan. And this one will be Dr. Evans and Matt Fritz, keeping watch. As you remember, the district has issued $100 million of the voter-approved $175 million bonds. We have begun the summer deferred and cycle maintenance work at Ravenwood, Fox Hill, West Inglewood, make, made great progress this summer. And then we purchased and made updates to the Northland Innovation Center in June and July, where our H-SAP program and others had, have their new home. The Performing Arts Center additions at both Winnetonka and Oak Park, and then the addition to Newmark are currently under design. You're already seeing some things happen at Oak Park with the tennis courts being moved, but we see that design is being completed by the end of this year. And then we'll see groundbreakings in the spring at both Winnetonka and Oak Park, too. Excited to, to do that. We're, we've got a lot of momentum with, again, the building visits and the excitement that we hear there. We will issue the remaining $75 million in the voter-approved bonds, and then ensure that 100% of all of the bond projects and deferred or cycle maintenance will be completed on time and under budget by August of 2028. So this will be, again, a monthly report, as you've become accustomed to. The next goal in the finance quadrant is new. It is the one that couples back to the staff quadrant. This one is about developing the fiscal model that supports the resource allocation responsive to our changing student demographics and operational needs. So this is the one where we take a look at the comprehensive staffing model, and then by the end of this school year, have the fiscal model that complements it, that could be flexible, equitable, efficient, and addressing, again, those diverse needs. So those two go hand in hand. And then, lastly, in the finance quadrant, we have ensuring the operational and debt service levies support the district's implementation of the strategic plan and long-range facilities plan. Matt Fritz is our point person. We took the first step in accomplishing this goal tonight. Thank you for that. You set the appropriate tax rate as, as deemed for the fiscal year 2026, and that's the first piece to it. Other integral components to it, however, include monitoring our debt capacity, and then our forecasts monthly, looking at local, state, and national economic changes, and that will tie to an additional board goal here in a moment. The five-year forecast that you always see from Matt in February. And then we'll work with CTTN to ensure salaries and benefits work within that current tax rate structure and the budget. Then we'll come back to you as a preliminary form in June, and then we'll update it, just like you saw tonight. So the cycle continues, and it's worked very well for us. So those, that's the finance quadrant. Let's talk about the additional goals that, again, are aligned to the balance scorecard, but they helped provide me with greater insight as to what the board really needs more of, or more conversation around, to show, again, that continual improvement, how we can, can continue that conversation so that it's, it's better exposed. So the first one is monitoring and staying abreast of evolving state and federal laws, governing funding sources and allocations, proactively adjusting financial strategies to reflect legislative changes, and clearly communicating the implications of funding shifts and resource alignment to stakeholders to support transparency, informed decision-making, and alignment with district priorities. So in all of the words that I just read, I hope you see alignment back to a couple of the pieces that we just talked about, namely, continuing our legislative and community advocacy in support of our students, and then the goals that couple together in the staff quadrant and the finance quadrant about allocation of resources. I also thought it was important for the board to know that in our weekly cabinet meetings, we address resource allocation, the monitoring of legislation, and then ways that we can trim our budgets. And that usually comes down to supplies, food, travel, but we want to make sure that resources are best pointed towards the, the mission on the whole, which is in the classrooms. I do serve on MASA, the Missouri Association for Superintendent's group, their legislative work group. What we're doing currently is trying to identify legislation that we'd like to repeal, and then further developing strategies to protect the interests, again, of public schools, so much aligned to the goal for Tammy. And then the Missouri, the monthly, I'm sorry, Greater Kansas City Superintendent's Association meetings include discussions on all of the topics that are outlined in that goal, and then primary forms of communications that we've used involve our leadership team, which meets monthly, all staff members during building visits, when we're face-to-face, and then targeted communications. So as I looked at all of the varieties of input that we have on these topics, I, I want to make it my goal to better utilize the Friday update to more explicitly represent this type of leadership in our school district, to keep the board apprised, and then, more importantly, armed with talking points. What I found in our building visits is, when we talk about the uncertainty with state and federal funding, and what you see on the news, we just need constant reassurance that our mission hasn't changed. We're relentless champions for all students and each other. And then being able to affirm that when questioned, because the rest of the nation and world is questioning those things, we need to be able to have the right talking points to affirm what we're doing here. So pledge that, come in your way. The next additional board goal that I, really, this one was unique and didn't have direct alignment to anything on the balance scorecard. And I, I like the proactive approach on it, too. The goal itself is ensures a culture of support and respect among students, staff, families, and communities by anticipating and investing in existing and new perspectives to include for the next five-year strategic plan. So our next five-year strategic plan will be launched in the academic year 2027. So what this goal really does for us is give us a full year to analyze, whose voices have we missed? Who have we not been able to most adequately represent as part of our strategic planning process? It also gives us some autonomy in, do we want to do things differently? Do we want to add new components? Do we want to turn it up on its head altogether? Who knows where we'll go with this? But I loved, again, the proactive thinking in, how can we best lift all voices to truly inform where we go? Because as, as you heard at the very beginning, this is how all of our goals start, and it creates the cycle of work for a five-year stretch. So thank you for that. And then the last one, that again, has some alignment here, is leads district improvement by building organizational capacity and implementing innovative and effective change processes that support a continuous growth model. Couple of the pieces that we have in place, but we might have room for expansion, and this, this speaks to my heart, that leadership development component. this speaks to my heart, that leadership development component. We have coaching and mentorship programs that help develop internal leadership and staff capabilities, like the Superintendent's Leadership Institute, which includes both classified and certified personnel. We have our High Performance High Potential Group as examples of that. But how can we continue to foster and develop leaders within our district? Also, feedback loops that show input from the school community that lead to changes in our practice. One that I'm so proud of that we've already made movement on, we had our first student advisory meeting, and we included two students from our high school alternative program. And they were such a breath of fresh air, and I don't know why we hadn't done it before, but it was an example of voices that hadn't been elevated in that context, where they have a direct audience to inform me on what they need in life. And it was something that, in one meeting, I certainly welcomed that change, so thank you for that, too. And then our processes for identifying and addressing systemic barriers. That's where I think we do have that connection back to the comprehensive staffing model, and then what resource allocation we provide as a result. Lastly, I added two other pieces to this that I think fit. Our succession planning will be a key component to this work, and we've already made some steps even this year to further delve into the organization, so that it isn't just cabinet and leadership positions. We go a little bit deeper to ensure that we always have people on the bench for consideration, but we're certainly investing in them regardless if they take a position here in the school district or not. And then our work in revising staff evaluations. Our focus will be on providing feedback, and that is something that we don't want just to be a nice coaching opportunity, a short conversation. We want it to be this real cultural component for the entire organization. When we talk about these goals as my opportunity to have conversations about continual improvement with you all, that's what we want as an ongoing culture for each and every one of our employees, that feedback loop where we continue to get better and better. So thank you for these additional board goals, too. I think, again, gives me insight into what's important to you and what you need regular updates on, and how we can make sure that the balance scorecard, in conjunction with these pieces, are elevated. So I would love to answer any questions that you have. I ran through them quickly. You've got more documentation in your folder. What do you have for me tonight?
Anybody? Susan, we're going to start with you, or you were on this committee. So first of all, thanks to the committee that worked on this, because I know it was not an easy task to go through all this and put it all together, and thank Dr. Daniels for her effort in responding and formulating what we needed to do to go forward. So I am very appreciative of all of this. Questions or comments that we've got? We'll start with you, or we can go around. We're good? Okay. Laura?
I was just going to thank you, and thanks to everyone, because this is very, very comprehensive, and I'm grateful to get this level of detail and to go into all of the goals at this very thoughtful approach that you've laid out here. I think it's going to be very helpful, and it gives us guidelines not only for all the other things that we need to look at, but for the balance scorecard going forward. So thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I don't have any questions, but I do just want to emphasize how much I appreciate your ability to collaborate with your team and leverage strengths, and just really bring to each goal the strength of your team and your ability to collaborate, and, like I said, just really leverage the strength. I mean, it's a true gift, and it really just speaks to your leadership, and I appreciate it very much.
I appreciate the comment, but I would turn it back to the incredible team. And as you all know, I've had more opportunity this year than ever to not just say how much I trust and value them, but put actions behind that, and I'm so very grateful for each and every one of them. Thank you.
All right. Moving right along, we're up to board committee and liaison reports. And a lot of what you've seen tonight have been from board committee meeting and talking to people and all of that. So it's not just one meeting a month or two meetings a month, people, on this role. There's a lot of moving parts to it. But any other liaison that we'd like to start with? Laura?
I was just going to say, I'm pretty sure Jo has notes to the things that we've attended some of them. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, well, I do. You're exactly correct. Couple of things the community team is working on, as Dr. Daniels said, with Tammy, we'll be bringing back to you next month, and you'll get ahead of time, but the legislative priorities for 2020, or 2025 and '26. And then we've had preliminary discussions about how we want to handle school board you before the next election and signing up. So stay tuned for that. We also met with the KCMO and North Kansas City Schools. We met the city council folks, again, talked about sidewalks around our district, and continued discussions about available land that the city owns at Crestview and available land that we own at Windwood. So those discussions will continue. We have a very energetic mayor in North Kansas City. We're very pleased about that, where we didn't have a relationship. He's making sure that we continue that relationship. We met last Friday. We talked about maybe their use of Nor Clay or maybe North Kansas City High School bike pathway right on the east side of North Kansas City High School, and how that may help or hinder, if you will, bus traffic, student traffic, parent tracking, traffic parking. So we'll do more about that. They want to get our students involved in their local government, maybe some mock council meetings for our students. So a lot of good work, and we've scheduled future meetings already. Gee, what else? Went to the Northland Regional Chamber with some of my colleagues here. We learned about Union Station and some of the upcoming events there, so stay tuned. They were pretty exciting. And then the Northland Education and Business Alliance met. We talked about, or they talked about, the Northland Career Center. Pretty exciting stuff that's coming up. They broke ground, and so that is going to come up out of the ground, because we certainly do use that for our kids. And then we learned a lot about the Metro North development and what's going in up there, and you've seen the new Chick-fil-A, and there's other businesses that are going in there. I know, again, some of my colleagues, and you did a great job at the Winnetonka High School Credit Union groundbreaking, and Rochelle was there, and it was just a great event. The kids were excited, and I'm excited for them, and I know everyone sitting here. We also, that same day, Laura was there, Tammy was there, and we watched Casey Current and Winnetonka High School students, about 60 girls, go in and look at prom dresses to be donated so that they can wear on, I guess, prom, or is it homecoming coming up? Okay. Yeah, this Friday. So anyway, that was a really cool thing, and the young women were just so excited about that. I would be remiss if I didn't talk about the Topping Street groundbreaking, and certainly we had Golden Throat that, yeah, go ahead, stand up, take a bow. Chad Evans, Dr. Evans, certainly spoke on behalf of the school district in that street improvement there. I also want to thank you. I attended, if you can believe it, 1960 is when we had a young kiddo at Meadowbrook die on the playground because of a heart problem. And the family called me and said they really would like to honor their brother. Again, 1960 is when he died. All these years later, I contacted Dr. Evans, and the family had a dedication to their little brother the other Saturday, so I attended that. And then I guess on Friday, Meadowbrook, I did my first board connection, and I went to the Meadowbrook Fun Run at Oak Park. So again, maybe two meetings scheduled, but there's a lot of things that the seven of us do to get involved with not only our schools, but our community.
I think Jo covered it.
Yeah, Jo covered it, and then some. Did we talk about the opening for Greenway, or no? That was a fun event, Monchere. So, yeah, because you can go to the Bayou Country, it's so nice. But anyway, if you weren't there, you missed it, so that's all I can tell you. We won't go any further than that. The only liaison I had was in my community, actually, was over at Davidson Neighborhood, and we had our neighborhood cookout, and the principal of Davidson Elementary and vice principal showed up. And the next thing I knew, I was invited to judge their chili cook-off the next day. So that was kind of, all I can tell you is number four will take your breath away. I have no idea who made which and what. But anyway, so we're busy doing a lot of things that you just see us once a month. The next meeting will be the calendar, and be found on the Agenda and Community on the district website. The next meeting will be a board workshop on October the 14th. Unless I hear any more for the good of the chapter, we are adjourned. Thank you.